Oh, look at that. No, that was it. Sorry, I just didn't. Okay, roll call. Johnson, here. Bowen, Sharon, Smith. And she'll be joining us. All right, pledge of allegiance.
Okay, and then we start things off with our statement of purpose. The board will govern lawfully with an emphasis on outward vision rather than internal communication, diversity and viewpoints, the position understanding of issues, strategic leadership more than administrative detail, clear distinction of board and chief executive roles, collective rather than individual decisions, future rather than past or present, and proactivity rather than reactivity. Okay, let's see. Approval of agenda. All in favor? Do a roll call. Johnson. Bowen. Sharon. All right. Joe Casey of schools, we have U Pass Elementary.
Yes, great. Thank you, everybody. It's great to be here tonight. I'm going to keep my comments. First of all, I just wanted to say that this group of people here is the toughest, most loving, tenacious group of people that you'll ever work with. They are amazing. What this team has done over the last eighteen months during the pandemic has been nothing short of pulling rabbits out of a hat. They are amazing people and and I am showing off two, three of them tonight because we also have been talking to Cheese Surfing Coach. So they get to hear from Eric and Kate here tonight. I want you to, I want to put them in front of you because they're amazing. Point over here. I mean, yeah, I'm going to give this to Kat now. So next slide, please. I just want to quickly say I'm also really proud of the work we've done. We've been working with Ellie Martinez this fall, adaptive schools. She led us through an incredible process. The hour to put this mission draft, which we'll be getting out to our staff. Things, but it's a working draft. It's, we're using it right now. We provide unique learning experiences that challenge all students to be their best selves. That's a powerful thing in the spring when you're writing vision statements. So it's paving the way for an amazing future. Excellent. Oh, you think it works? Quick button? It's all good. Okay, I'm assuming board members that you have read or will read the data and please let me know if you have questions, hit me with some hard ones at the end if you want. But by the numbers, percentage on track, maybe year, this is dibbles, this is our little ones. These numbers we anticipate, we predict will be a lot better, MOY, which is right after the break. Because, well, I'll let these guys go into it. But sixty-seven, forty-one, et cetera. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on that, but we moved in ELA, English language, from thirty-six percent agreed in the year, forty-nine percent, and that's incomplete data. We're not done testing. We have, we made similar growth in math. Math is a concern for us and we're, we're going to replicate that process. This team has been amazing and what they're doing around the science of reading, implementing SIPs as a reading intervention tier one, just a tier two, just the beginning of many tools will eventually help across time. All right. Just time at the end for questions about the data. If you want to hit me with those things at the end, right, please do. I'm going to turn it over to Eric Wester and I'm really pleased to share him with you tonight. He's an amazing guy. And because we have an outdoor learning specialist position at U Pass this year, so that's why you can hear from him. All right, Eric, take it away.
All right, so I'm Eric Wester. My official position now is I'm a PE teacher at U Pass, but I'm also the outdoor education instructor for kindergarten through fifth grade now. We don't do sixth because they already have their outdoor books. So a couple of things that we really wanted to highlight this year was, this was kind of our first year just jumping in and figuring out how we can use the outdoors. It's something we're really passionate about. Not only just to enjoy it, but to use it to support students who are learning, which is why my position was created. So what we've been spending our time thus far doing is really highlighting those areas that we figure, that teachers see as a need in the classroom and they work, they work with me in order to design lessons in those specific areas. So, for example, working with the first and second graders, they found that they just don't have a ton of time for writing. And so what we do is we get together once a week during these opportunity blocks. It's guaranteed time with the kids. And we go outside and we will do some sort of nature journaling where the first second grade teacher, as well as myself, guide the kids through a writing exercise in the outdoors where we get to have chances for teachers to edit work as well as peer editing and those sorts of things that really the teachers have felt like they haven't had enough time in the classroom to do. So spend a nice guaranteed time and really it's also kind of some focus time where kids are really just sitting and really using their observation skills out in nature and just kind of slowing down and really getting into the deep ideas that they then put on paper. So that's just one example. We also have identified some areas that teachers that want to work on some of their science standards. So we get together and they might be teaching science standard throughout the week and we have an online document that they just kind of tell me what they've been working on and then I come up with activities to help support that, but out in the outdoors. So we might take a walk up the creek and try to look at different structures in the creek and watch how the water moves, or we might look at different animal habitats or we've gone through and we've tried to create various Native American habitats for a social studies unit. So it just really kind of depends on what that teacher needs and the support that they want.
That's great. Thank you very much. And Eric is an amazingly collaborative person and teachers just love working with him. And so he is leading by example. We really appreciate you for that. So, all right, so our next leverage point is leverage point two. As I said before, SIPs and Read Naturally are just the beginning of tools that we're bringing Andy to really master and be masters of, of science of reading for the benefit of our kids. So Kate Keller and Eric will both be talking about this. And Kate Keller, I just want to introduce, I wanted to show her off. She is our amazing art teacher and library. She has brought the library to life at U Pass. Our kids are crazy about books. Now, to be quite.
They are crazy about books. That's wonderful. Yeah, so I teach art in library, but also every day I get to go to kindergarten and fourth grade. And so this year we've started some new tier two interventions. And I'll let Eric tell you mostly about the primary one.
Sure. So really Kinder, first, second, and a little bit of third, really jumped into this new program, new to us program. It was called SIPs. And really it's designed to be a tier two intervention. Kinder hasn't focused on it as much because you have to place into this program and it's just not quite there yet, but they will as time goes on. That's kind of how it's designed. So in first, second, and third, it's kind of, if you're ever at our school at that time, it will appear like Grand Central Station because you see kids shifting all over the place. And what we're doing is between the first, second, third grade teacher, as well as Ian Ferguson, the music teacher, myself, I might be forgetting somebody else, we're splitting up the kids into very small groups. And in those small groups, we go through this curriculum. And so far, it's taken a lot of people to do this because the teachers have really kind of looked through the data and then finding that even students who appear to be high level readers, they have some gaps that we decided we needed to fill. So we really just plugged all of them into that program. And we then started identifying those gaps, filling them in. And we're actually starting to see now like, oh, okay, now that they're, you know, they could read all these whole words just fine, but their phonics was kind of an issue. And so the SIPs program has been able to kind of fill that in to let them challenge themselves with multiple words or higher level texts and those sorts of things. So that's kind of what we're doing with the SIPs program thus far. We constantly reevaluate. The program itself has different benchmarks and based on those benchmarks, we then look at that data and we can decide if a student needs to stay where they are in whatever group they're in, or we might be able to push them up or drop them back if we decide that they need have some other things. So very fluid that way.
And yeah, and then SIPs goes into third grade, as you said, but some of those high readers in third grade have also started Read Naturally, which is our intermediate program. So again, it's a computer program. It's been around a long time, but the company keeps updating it and making it more user friendly and effective. So we just started it this year. And so in fourth grade, we started it with everybody as a universal intervention, just to kind of see how it would play out. And now we're at the point where we're starting to see that some of our higher four grade readers are ready to sort of graduate from this program and move on to something else and our lower and kind of more middle ground fourth graders, they're just growing exponentially. So it's really neat to see how it's tracking the growth and seeing how it kind of graduates the kids who don't need it anymore and then really benefiting the kids that are struggling a little bit more. And then in fifth and sixth grade, they're using it as small group pullouts. So more targeting those kids that need kind of an extra boost and reading. So it's really neat how it's been used as that tier one, hitting everybody and then placing them. So then it becomes the tier two and just it's always the small group.
Oh, I'll just speak to this really quickly. One of our action plan, well, you can read this. So I'll leave it for, but sixty-seven percent of all of our staff, not just classroom teachers, but agree that it is closing the gap for our students. So that's good. And our goal was eighty percent by the end of the year. Just some celebrations. This was over a month ago. Look how far kids are. There's Akadians and Dibbles, our youngest one. Look how high they've jumped off of the trend line. We've actually, in my time, we've never seen those kinds of jumps. This point. Let's go through them quickly. It's in front, either on or jumping off. Target, the line is the target. And you know, with the setbacks and the reading laws and things like that during the pandemic, this is, that's what I mean. The teachers at U Pass, in my opinion, pulling rabbits out of a hat. It's incredible. Read Naturally, just really powerful, strong growth. And this was a month ago. So we're really looking forward to our MOY data being complete. You've probably read all this stuff here. Thank you, Eric and Kate. Fantastic job. And now I'd like to share with you Natasha Leonardo. I'd like to, she is our U Pass Elementary School constructional coach. We are thrilled to have her. She's absolutely amazing and has an amazing way with, with art teachers. And I'd like to say she's all ours, but she wants the. Go ahead, take it away.
So at U Pass, eleven point three is working on leverage of their instruction using seven steps. This is a book that is district-wide initiative throughout all the schools. So what exactly is it? It's really tools and strategies for teachers to implement in the classroom, to have students actively engaged in their content. So it supports students have meaningful conversations, which are then ideally transferred to powerful and purposeful writing. It also really supports students being accountable in the classroom and having to talk, having a voice that all voices are heard. A big part of it is kind of when that looks and sounds like, it might be a little noisy of a classroom. I like to kind of think of it as a true chaos versus perceived chaos, where if you're to actually dive into it, you notice that all the conversations are on topic, that students are actively listening and able to share and ask questions back and forth to one another in their groups. And then a teacher would ideally be able to have any student share out and that they can answer the specific content question. So that really allows those students that might be quieter, have voices heard, those students that maybe not feel confident sharing out, helps support them because they've shared it already and they've gotten that chance to share out. So far, the staff have been trained at U Pass initially by two of the teachers in the end of school year on steps one and two.
One and three.
One and three.
Three, and then we added.
And then we did a training on December third on one of their strategies that's called the Q triple S A that combines that two, three, four, and six into that, which is really enforcing students to answer complete sentences provided with academic language, allowing time for structured conversation. And really that focus, that conversations do need to have structure and a purpose and always guiding with a purpose for the engagement of students.
And one of the things that Natasha did recently, it was just really magical, was one of, one of the outcomes of our instructional rounds was the need to really define accountable talk and really under, you know, like, it isn't just about kids turning, it's sort of like adaptive schools for kids. You know, like, like Tina was talking about, but what is it that they're saying when they turn and talk? Is it of high quality? They're using that. In fifteen minutes, Natasha was able to have our staff do a post-it note activity where they were really coming, developing their own definitions of what accountable talk was. The collaboration, and that was really wonderful that you did that. So thank you.
Yes.
Yeah. All right. I think I'm going to end with just some celebrations. This will probably be the first time in my entire career that I end on time. And I just wanted to say that our work with Ellie Martinez has been transformative. Our work with each other has been transformative. I really feel like, we were just talking about this a minute ago, I feel like we're really on fire. And with Natasha and the support of Elizabeth and Eric, it's just been incredible. Questions? And we also want to thank you, the Board of Education, for, you don't get thanked very often. Thank you. This is a lot of work and we, we can't do, we can't be so inspired unless you're so inspired. So, thank you. Questions?
Another thing to celebrate. All right, Children's Hospital partnership.
So my name is Emily Pyle. I am the program manager for Children's Hospital Colorado, a healthy kids program. And I just wanted to thank Colleen Johnson and Dustin and U Pass for tonight, but they've been tremendous partners. We just wrapped up our first cohort at Mantis Middle School last week and it seems like the kids really had a good time. We had tremendous engagement. So thank you for everyone for making that happen. So to set the stage, as most of you probably know, back in May twenty twenty, our CEO, Jenna Hudson, for the first time ever declared a pediatric state of emergency. And this is because of the numbers that we're continuously seeing in our emergency department. So half of the children who are entering our emergency department are coming because they're currently experiencing a mental health crisis. And they're sitting in our emergency department for hours and it can take up two days to place these kids. And they're sitting in an emergency department room. So if you can imagine, that in itself is traumatic. And in Southern Colorado, the numbers are amongst the worst. So we know that it's basically a mental health desert down in Southern Colorado, particularly for the pediatric population. So we have seen a four, a hundred and forty-five percent increase in behavioral health visits between January and April of twenty twenty-one. Compare that to back in those same four months, that's in twenty twenty. So what is Children's Hospital doing about it? They are the pediatric expert in the region. And actually, we launched our resilience program prior to COVID. So January twenty twenty, we launched this program. And this was really stimulated when Margaret Seaman came on board. She had the idea of how are we as an organization preventing these crises? We know that these mental health crises are in fact preventable, a hundred percent preventable. How do we, as an organization, infuse our services into social structures that touch children every single day? And that's where the resilience program came to light. So I want to share with you just our vision, to ensure all children have the opportunity to survive and thrive in the face of life's inevitable and predictable adversities through an upstream approach delivered at age eleven to twelve, which has been determined by pediatricians as the ideal age for building resilience. So what I want to emphasize on this slide is the age cohort that we decided. When we first started to look at a school-based resilience program, we thought, hmm, maybe seventh grade, maybe high school. But we really looked at the literature, we looked at the science and we talked to pediatricians and they said sixth grade is really when, when kids are starting to look to their peers to model behavior instead of their parents. So they're really shifting. And this is the ideal age where they're starting to develop healthy or unhealthy coping strategies. And so this is really the ideal age to start to engage them in this process. So what I want to emphasize our program is that it's a hundred percent evidence-based. So when we looked at the literature, we could not find a universal, school-based resilience program. It just didn't exist. However, Harvard University and the American Academy of Pediatrics has done extensive research on what what contributes to a child's resilience, what makes a one child more resilient than another. And there are a ton of different kinds of facets that contribute to a child's resilience. However, as you can see in the middle, that's what we call our resilience wheel. So this is basically the fundamental pillar of our program. So every single interaction that our team has with a child is really around strengthening one of these facets that we know contributes to resilience. So for example, healthy coping strategies. Having positive relationships, particularly that adult-child relationship that we know is so critical. So what is our program? So it is a preventative school-based resilience program that is delivered in a one-on-one setting with a trained resilience health coach that is children's employed. We go through extensive training with these coaches. And at a high level, aims to improve self-efficacy, emotional self-regulation and resilience among the sixth grade kids. Again, it really centers around role setting. So as you could see in this slide, every interaction is really about strengthening one of these pillars. And so the health coach works on identifying areas where the child would like to strengthen one or more of these areas. So it happens on a one-to-one weekly session. It's about six weeks over thirty, and the interaction's about thirty minutes. And, oh, and it's universal. So one of the components of the program that we've stayed true to is that everyone is automatically enrolled. Parents have the ability to opt their student out. Kids have the ability to opt their student out at any time. Themselves out, I'm so sorry. Kids have the ability to opt themselves out at any time. But it's not stigmatizing. So when a kid gets up from class and goes to meet with a health coach, it's not seen as punitive. So it's truly a universal program. And again, it is evidence-based. So we do ask students to take a preemptive assessment. And that's how we measure success because we know that there's so many programs out there that are fabulous, but they're not evidence-based. They haven't been proven to work. And we wanted to make sure that before we started to scale this broadly, we were actually producing the results that we say that we want. So what have we seen? So this is our third year implementing. We've done it in five schools, four districts. And we continue to see across the board, even in different student populations, different demographics, increased personal and relational resilience, improvements in social and emotional self-efficacy, strengthened emotional self-regulation skills. And because we're able to improve these protective factors, we've seen decreased symptoms such as depression, anxiety just across the board. So interestingly, so students identified as Hispanic and actually black, which is not on this slide, as baseline. So before engaging in the program, they are slightly scoring slightly lower on the self-efficacy and resilience questionnaires. However, after the program implementation, after participating in the program, they're scoring at basically the same level as their peers. So not only are they increasing, they're increasing that equitable amount so that all students are basically at the same level. So what are students saying about it? So ninety percent of students would recommend the program, ninety percent would participate again, and ninety-two percent said that they felt like they developed skills to be more resilient. I'll just share one of these. My health coach was so awesome. She took an interest in my daily activities and was very helpful when I needed assurance. My health coach taught me great life skills and helped me set my own goals. And then, so after each cohort, I do do focus groups with teachers and principals to make sure that the program is meeting their needs as well as ours. And we continue to refine the program. But I wanted to share with you kind of some of the feedback that we've received. We've been able to bucket them into four large categories. So it offers support traditionally not provided in schools. It is in fact feasible for students who have missing class throughout this six-week period. The perception is that the health coach is in fact a supportive adult and they continue to recommend healthy kids to other schools. So I'll just share a couple of these. A lot of that student, or wait. Students come back to class with this I can do attitude that wasn't there before. There is definitely a positive shift in the student's mood that is noticeable after they talk to their coach. Program focuses on improving executive function skills, which is invaluable as they transfer into adolescence. They can use these skills to continue to grow and develop. Add additional resources to a student that the school is not able to offer. I want the kids to become self-directed and the program teaches them strategies to do that that aren't provided in class. So what's next? We continue to get inquiries from schools, as you can imagine, particularly post-COVID. And we continue to want to grow. It is, I don't have this on the slide, but I do want to note that this program is a hundred percent philanthropically funded by the Colorado Springs community. And we continue to receive very generous grants and gifts from people. So we know that this is a program that is supported and even funded by the community themselves. This is something that they want. We do have more national publications and peer-reviewed academic journals citing the efficacy of this program. And we are very thoughtful around, we are a hospital. However, we know that no organization can truly make transformational social change by itself. However, we know that no organization can truly make transformational social change by itself. We need a collective impact model. We need to coalesce our resources with other organizations in the community. So we continue to expand and look for partnerships. And that's it. So any questions?
Yeah. I was just gonna say, just really quickly, that Emily has been a great partner, and this has been a great learning environment. I think for us, and Dustin and his team have been exceptional to work with. And I know there's been a few, but there's one incident where the coach at the, at Manitou Middle School was, the interaction was incredibly important in preventing a significant situation. And so it's just, it's a great partnership with children's, and Emily's been just a joy to work with, and Dustin and his team.
So yeah, I just curious about that to my line. So this is something that launched. We were in, we were in conversations last spring, and Emily taken that sort of lift to get it going this fall. Jack also had connections with Margaret Seaborn, and we've met. And then also, it's gonna be at U-Pass last spring.
Sixth grade. So I'm a huge fan, I'm a huge fan of coaching. I've had several coaches, I wore most of them off sadly. Margaret actually made population health popular before population health was anybody was even talking about it. That actually started with D11 and their staff. So that's been her passion. She, we did a lot of work before she went to Children's with resilience, she was doctors. So there's probably some analogies between doctors and sixth graders. That's okay. Beginning takes on that. So I'm a huge fan. I love the fact that it's evidence-based. I love the fact that you guys have a statistician as well. Then that does a bunch of stuff, which I don't really understand, but I think it's fantastic, and I appreciate you guys picking it.
Yeah, thank you. What comments, we have any?
We do not.
Johnson. Hi. Owen. Sharon.
Hi.
You know, as part of our annual voluntary reports, this is, this is not one that needs action, but it's really just a maybe a check-in. And I'm glad it's happening now. You just, it's a good time to stop, assess, and reflect. As you remember, in June, when we went to our retreat with Ellie and the board, we said that there's a lot of different actions within this action plan. And reflectively, you can kind of see where we are and still what's ahead of us. And as we also mentioned, there are times, sometimes when you get into an action plan where there's lots of different steps, you say, that might need to wait until next school year or later on. So what I've done here, Eric and I have done, is taken different, specific actions for each of the leverage points and really have either put a check like it's done, and then, or yellow means it's started and it's not complete. A lot of these might be ongoing. Or that if it's not yellow, then it hasn't started yet. So I think one of the most important things that we really also tend to continue to connect our actions as a school district to our leverage points, and really having that language around specifically. And that's grounded in leverage point one, to engage staff that members need fully in our core values, leverage points, and strategic outcomes. So I think one of the big indicators for us is understanding that, do our, does our team know? Do our students know, and do our parents know? I think this is one area that we're gonna continue to go into. And I think one of the most important things is that we assure folks that these six leverage points are not just for one year. This is ongoing, and that all of a sudden, next year, there's not gonna be another leverage point posted there. However, there might be different actions. So I don't know if you all have individual questions. I was not gonna go into each of the actions, but I can tell you that it's been an important tool for us to have this action plan in all of the schools as well. For example, if we look at page six, you can see specific action number two, complete a conference review of math instruction. It's in yellow because that's where we are right now. Eric and the teachers are currently in the process of looking at two potential resources for each of the grade-level bands. And in January, February, they'll start to pilot a possible math curriculum in each of those grades. I don't know how much the board wants me to go into each of these, but I can just tell you there are a lot of things in motion. At the same point, some of the feedback from some of the listening sessions has been, in an implementation year, it can feel like a lot. And so we want to make sure that we've taken that feedback and making adjustments forward. But any questions about what I shared or presented? I know we have a retreat in January as well, so happy to spend a little bit more time as needed.
I know, I appreciate it. It's great to see the progress and track it. I appreciate it. Do you think we need to revisit this for the retreat?
I think probably the leverage point that continues to have more highlights is that key action number six around strength of family, community, communications, and relationships. So that, there's a lot of yellows because we've seen that. Yeah, I look forward to having more dialogue around this at the board meeting. Unless there's other questions.
I have to go to a casually session on that very thing, and the presenter wasn't able to make it. And the people that stepped in, there wasn't much substance, so. It could have been. It is not.
Just kudos to our whole staff around just asking questions about what is the action plan, what are the leverage points? And then I think continuing to, I know today, Maria, who visited with her staff today. And making sure that there's been a lot of language vocabulary introduced. And so during that timeframe, it's great to continue to ask questions, like it's safe environment. Maria, I don't know if you have anything you want to add specifically, because you did that today.
I think just a reminder that the district action plan and the school action plan is not a one-year plan. I think that some staffs have got to deal with a lot of pressures. Run to the gun, and said, no, this is like five or six years. And so keep that in mind, that that's where we're gonna be in five years. And then, which is our plan, if we can go on, we can overhaul the whole plan.
Do you think it's worth changing the header so it doesn't say 21, 22 action plan?
I think, well, we talked about it as well today, because these action steps are for 21, 22. But I see some messaging around, that would be very helpful. I really did. It's posted, like it's posted on our district's website, and so I can see how it looks like, wow, we're gonna be done with that. But I think that's a way we can work on messaging. Yes.
All about continuous improvement.
Thanks for that feedback. No actions.
All right, so last meeting, we went through some examples and kind of had a conversation about what we want to do. And I think everybody said that they wanted to just go for the full 25% of the mill, of the total program for the levy override. So I've included that. And here on the second page is the resolution. And really what that includes is the, this total program, the levy that increased from 22.816 last year up to 23.816. Our authorized override actually decreased quite a bit. We were a little over 30 mils last year, but because of assessment evaluation, that dropped down. So for a total of 50.87, or 87 mils. We already kind of talked about it, just I'm not gonna be as a question.
No, this is the operational budget, so this is how we actually execute kids, so.
Exactly. All right, so I just need a motion to certify.
Johnson. Bowen. Sharon. Yeah, so this policy part, Colleen Johnson, if we could update us on changes for IK-SR and those suggestions. Absolutely.
So just a really quick recap. You guys have heard before about graduation guidelines. The last year, the class of 2021 wouldn't have been the first class per state statute to have to meet the graduation guidelines. We first adopted graduation guidelines about six years ago, and I've come before the board once before, just to update as we've got new opportunities available to students. I'm coming again just to add career technical education capstone as an option for students to meet the graduation guidelines. Meaning that it's gotta be the equivalency of or equal to the Colorado academic standards in regards to English, language arts, or mathematics for career and college readiness. And so we have a lot of things right now on our menu. One of the things that we don't currently have as a district is the capstone. And capstone is this kind of broad, not really defined thing from the state of Colorado. But we have a CTE capstone at the end of every CTE program within our district. And that's really about work-based learning and the opportunity for students to have an internship or an apprenticeship or an industry-sponsored program as part of their current technical education pathway. So this year, for the first year, we have a student, for example, who has an internship with Peak Vista because of our health sciences pathway. We also, of course, have an industry-sponsored project in our home build. But the other thing that we have that's incredibly near and dear to my heart is our ACE programming. And ACEs for students, as you remember, that are historically under or non-employed, those are often students with disabilities. Some of our McKinney-Bett or homeless students, students in the foster care system. And so we have an ACE program in Manitou Springs High School. We also have one at Manitou Springs Middle School. But the last course in that ACE program is a work-based learning program. Like I've shared with you before in our ACE programming, this is work we've done for a very, very long time. All good things start in special ed. And so we've done this for a long time. We now have an ACE program that's certified to the state through career and technical education. And it's really available to all of our students. Our students with very mild disabilities, all the way to our students with significant support disabilities. And in a partnership with the U-Pass OSIS, we have a recycling program in Woodland Park that our students participate in. And so what we're here to the board is to add our CTE pathway capstone to our graduation guidelines. I feel like it's really equitable and inclusive.
Looks like there's a couple additional changes as well, just corrections that I have.
Yeah, just stop making it not so course-specific, so that if those courses weren't offered, then it wouldn't come down by what's totally listed there. So anything you want to add to that?
No, that's exactly right. Just, it was, in the beginning, we didn't know quite as much as we know now. And we did add kind of course names. We wanted a lot more broad than that. The other piece is that the Pike's Peak Region has signed an MOU, a memorandum of understanding, where if a student were to come from Coronado to Manitou, if they met the grant guidelines at Coronado, we would take them. Same thing if one of our students were to move. We think that's also incredibly equitable, but it also makes it so that a student that would maybe move five or six times in their high school career, which we have certainly seen, would not be subject to the choices of the adults in their lives. But we would protect, we would protect them in their equity as they moved across the Pike's Peak region. We were actually a leader for that amongst the state. So it adds that piece to.
As I said, the question is not even one of the edits, but as far as the SAT and ACT scores on there, what is that?
Great question, Jack. So those are cutoffs that the state has given us. So if a student hits that, that score, then they automatically check the box, if you will, for one of those categories. Yeah. There's some great work being done in the region around crosswalks between different things. So as more of that information becomes available, I can make that to you guys as well.
We had to make an adjustment to our transcript this year because we were including some data, student-specific information. And so really, the advisement is that was, at some point, school districts got the understanding that we were supposed to put that on transcript. But that's really very private information that you wouldn't essentially want. So it just says if the student met the, what's the language that's actually there?
Yeah, so it says current college readiness, and it's just, they changed it again. So it's reading, writing, and communication, and it's just met or not met. And then mathematics, met or not met. So it used to be that if you applied to C-Bover, for example, your transcript and your SAT scores would be on your transcript, but that is not what it is anymore. Students now send their scores from SAT or ACT directly to their institutions of choice.
Awesome, do we have a motion to accept the suggested changes to the IK-SR?
And a vote? Johnson. Bowen. Sharon. Hey, retreat agenda. I guess Tina should be the lead on this, but there's a few suggestions.
I have, I have notes that we wanted to look at the board superintendently, get those policies, because there were just maybe some inconsistencies with other policies and the policy B. So I know we've thought about spending some time there. Look at that dialogue there. It's a good time, my own evaluation is due in January, so that's a good topic for that retreat as well.
So I have this date for the retreat scheduled, but I don't have the times or the location.
I think we have it here, starting at 12:00. And Ellie Martinez will also, she's scheduled to be here for that morning in terms of any kind of facilitated practice we want to do. And then she's also gonna, from that work, Tina and I talked with Ellie that, from the work that we do at the retreat, that she's gonna stay on during the board meeting that evening to be a process observer and see if there's any adjustments there, so.
So noon until approximately?
I think it was noon to four, and we have like a 30-minute break when we go into work session.
I'm sure you have ideas for the agenda, we can tell those to you and Tina.
Yeah, that'd be great. There was a policy too that we started to talk about two months ago around student discipline. If that's something that we also want to look at as well. That doesn't get reviewed until March, so either it could be brought up in March and could be reviewed or worked again, so.
One of these we talked about on that, since I made the proposition, proposal is to maybe work on some discussion. And if you're looking for any evidence regarding discipline and so forth, that we could move forward to provide that. So we could, when we get to March, we might have a start on, on making that happen. So if you want, I don't know, Elizabeth, the Jane, that I can do on that part of the retreat, or whether we just put on the agenda for the retreat and have that be kind of a starting point of conversation and determine the steps to go from there.
Yeah, and Ellie could also maybe facilitate something like, what are the values? What are, what are currently in our policies, and what are the values that may not be represented? She could maybe facilitate something as well.
Yeah, that might get us to do a good crisis.
Any other topics you can just send to Tina? Just the ones that I've been keeping notes on this semester. And then I guess also the action plan just returning.
All right, I have the updates. Well, I think the best you are hardcore.
So that's pretty sad. Yeah, so like I said, I have a lot of thoughts around that particular area. Really the only session I got to, there was a very good presentation, the keynote speaker around Thursday. I put in, which I do actually, I recorded. Looked like copy. But um, but yeah, the, the community involvement was something I was really interested in. So uh, getting parents and community involved with boardwork, with the district, uh, with the kids. And as you, as you have listed there, on the leverage point, all of the outcomes from there are tremendous. And it actually also spills over into the presentation from Children's Hospital. You know, so, so having these opportunities uh, for kids to fulfill safety, to have a uh, a secure place to be and have, having these relationships that allow them uh, regulation and ability to learn is tremendous. So I, I think we have an opportunity to do some work there. And I have some ideas, even though they weren't brought up at Cazzy. So there was, it was kind of limited, to be honest with you, um, with valuable uh, breakouts that I was able to attend Friday.
I think that's really important because as we are talking with, actually Maria as well today, as we're looking at her mid-year plans for the school and January, February is to start to build out the action plan for the next school year. And so I think it's really good timing to say what is, what is going on in this area and how can we continue. That was a question we asked at the listening sessions around stakeholder engagement. I think we just started to think about how to really bring parents back in, especially as sec- elementary is now starting to do that more often with COVID. For example, Chris, Chris has parents at his school today, which has been a disconnect.
Yeah, and education is really important because most of us don't understand, unless you're working in the field of trauma and psychology, you don't really recognize or realize how important these relationships are and what that means from a developmental standpoint. Uh, especially prior to that, even prior to that eleven, twelve-year-old age, uh, how critical zero to three, oh, three years of old is. So educational pieces might be the only other opportunity to engage, um, which we're looking to do through other means um, in the, in the community, but offering educational uh, opportunities uh, for parents to get involved and, and learn. Because, you know, I was a parent at age twenty-two and no one gave me a handbook. And so I could have used one. So if we can get some, some education out there, I mean, it would be a tremendous asset to, to the district.
I also attended the keynote and um, I enjoyed it as well. Um, I think one of the more memorable moments, um, he sort of put up a series of test scores that were all pretty good. And then, you know, he says, those are my test scores. And then sort of looks, goes down the line and explains um, why they were sort of where they were. But, you know, he said, the one that I remember, his GPA was two point seven. And then uh, and he said, that was the second highest A in my school. And so that, that idea that looking at these numbers, parting the larger story or conversation aren't really actually, and he actually didn't know that they were great test scores. Like when he applied to college, he's like, I'm going to get in, my scores are amazing. And, you know, and so just this idea um, of sort of how, how we assess work is headed, you know, I think he was very effective.
Yeah, his point on that note was, don't use data to define the person, use the person to define the data, to explain it. Same for a school. Don't use a school's data to define the school, use the school to explain the data, because doing it that way makes a lot more sense. And you're going to understand nuances, you're going to understand situations that data across the board is just numbers. And so to make sense of it, you have to use the reciprocal and start with whether it's the, the students or the organization, to make sense of what the data actually is. And uh, it was very nicely done to, to show how his data didn't look so good. Uh, but there's, there were reasons for that. Uh, and uh, the fact that you had one, one teacher who did not like him, which he didn't know why. And the next year had a teacher who really did like him and he didn't know why. But if he would have had two in a row that didn't like him, what that would have done for him, because the second teacher would have given the hope. And so that just leads to what all our staff and, and really all of us can be for a student, just to see them um, and give them hope.
I went to one session and then had to get, got pulled away. But that session was around, it was also the keynote on the first day. It was around the grading practices and how, how there can be so much variability and to that point, not tell an actual complete package story of what the student actually learned. And so I, it actually kind of connects to some of the parent listening session that we participated in last week. So I thought it was a pretty tight one. He has a book and it's, I can't remember the title of it, but it could be a good read.
I know, to say, we're, we're just going to, which actually would be, I guess.
Nothing significant, right?
Nothing's becoming, we get, I mean, I personally just get a lot from C D C. Um, that we kind of discussed earlier about where are we going with the accountability clock, are we shifting our U I P? I don't think we've gotten any letters about REDACT refunds or curriculum, have we?
No, well, there's just the, the changes for the REDACT licensure endorsements, that you're not, not going to have to potentially need as much documentation in that part. And then Suzie and I have our first and Eric as well, first, Tika Lyons.
Tika Lyons?
Hi, Tika Lyons.
Hi, Tika Lyons, yeah, uh, on Thursday morning. So that's the, let's the uh,
the lobbyist group that really brings these issues. Yeah, a slew of districts have gotten a concern, not just about using REDACT funds for the intervention, but also what are they using for their corporate nominance evidence base. So I know that's been a concern. That was uh, our local control, this, this state, the state, because of the state board now having heightened concern the last primary reading, which I think we all agree is important, but at the same time, maybe it's a big state current level. So I think that's going to be something we might see more from the state board, as well as um, I think even though we don't have charters or contract schools, I think the state board again, hearing the appeals from Meredith Academy up in Woodland Park, um, other contract schools, or going to Academy, I think will be interesting for all schools, as we consider we need to see choice and enrollments changing throughout the state. So I think those are things for the board too.
There's some draft legislation around just like, for example, school, teacher funding, especially in rural schools. Um, but we'll have more of a, a good understanding of what's actually going to stick um, next, this, this Thursday morning. So we'll get a better understanding of that. As I get any updates, I'll forward them to you. Take some stances as a board as we do.
Tina, we're going to send you ideas.
That's why you guys like power through. I think I'm pretty focused, but you're crushing it.
No, actually, the presentations are really well done.
Oh, well done, concise, to the point, bam. New format helping everyone, right?
Can I ask, um, for me, I've heard a couple of people say this room is better to hear. Could we talk about that to the board? Would you prefer to be in here and the media center? I know if we have more people, it's a little harder, but.
Yeah, I think we moved there because of COVID and being apart from each other. I think it felt like we could have a larger group of audience so that they can feel closer together. I will have to say for me, it's just the lighting is better. I can track better instead of being in the front like with the dark and the light. And you know, also at my age, the wrinkles look better in this one. Two-fold, more practicality and then all superficialness, so. But I don't know, I mean, are the acoustics better for the audience? I mean, and for the online viewers, do you think? Yeah, I mean, it is vast and high ceilings and old, and when the rain starts, it's.
If we did, what I've seen, there's a large occupancy, you just set up the TV in a bigger space. So you almost have like a satellite. So you have a occupancy for the first people that can come. And then the secondary might be the center with the TV. District twenty had to do that, not two of them. I don't know what it is.
It's posted somewhere. I know I've seen it. It's like it's like sixty, sixty. It's big. It's more than you would think, yeah.
The actual.
Not comment on the regular session.
Right, let's see. So moving to executive session, we don't have to adjourn this meeting. We have to just move to executive session. We have to stay the same.
Yeah.
There we go. Would you like me to make a motion? All of our revised statutes, Title twenty-four, six, section one-two, section four, have to go into executive session to discuss a personal matter. This particular matter that is to be discussed behind closed doors is part of a personal matter involving two teachers.
Are you going to have some, yeah, that motion?
I second, yeah, so I second.
You seconded, yeah.
We don't have to list who will be?
We will after we, after it's settled on.
Johnson, I'm Owen, Sharon, Bitovich. What's the?